Hi, good evening, everyone. I am going to call to order this evening's public board meeting for School District Number Seventy-Three, the Kamloops Thompson Board of Education. Before we get started this evening, I want to respectfully honor and acknowledge that we are privileged to be meeting this evening on the unceded territory of the Sequepnic people, specifically to Kamloops to Sequepnic Nation. We are very honored to live, learn, and play on these beautiful lands. Trustee Diane Jewels sends her regrets this evening as she is at the Adams Lake graduation. Trustee Karpuk and trustee Ophi also send their regrets and wish that they could be here. So, that being said, trustees, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the minutes from the regular public board meeting dated May the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Moved by trustee Kang, seconded by trustee Hickson. Is there any discussion on the minutes circulated this evening? All right, seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Trustee McKelvey is joining us online this evening, and if I don't hear a opposed, I will mark you as in favor, trustee McKelvey.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the consent agenda circulated this evening. Moved by trustee Kang, seconded by trustee Hickson. Is there anything that trustees wanted lifted from this evening's consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Trustees, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda circulated for this evening's meeting. Moved by trustee Kang, seconded by vice chair Kershaw. Are there any additions or deletions on this agenda? Yes, trustee Sim.
One under thirteen, please.
Any other additions from trustees or deletions? All right, Dr. Nixon, any additions or deletions from you? No. Acting secretary, treasurer Talon?
None, thank you.
None, thank you very much. I will call the question on the amended agenda. All those in favor? Thank you. And opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you. I'm very excited this evening for our education topic, which is the Young Artists Conference for two thousand and twenty-five, and I will turn it over to you, Dr. Nixon, to introduce this evening's education topic.
Thank you so much through you, board chair, grieve to the to the parents, the staff, community members, and board members. On Wednesday, April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Kamloops Thompson School District celebrated the thirty-eighth Young Artists Conference. It was a dynamic, inspiring event, and it was showcasing the creativity, the talent, and the passion of over a hundred and twenty grades, four through seven students. In this conference, young artists explored diverse artistic techniques and learned directly from professional artists and educators and knowledge keepers who engaged students in hands-on workshops in Maiti sash making, wood burning, monotype printing, watercolor, photography, birch bark art, and more. The day concluded with a celebration of students' artistic creations in the Young Artists Gallery at the grand opening of the courthouse. Tonight, you're going to hear from the essential role of the artist in education in curricular and extracurricular opportunities that have provided our students with these outlets. I welcome the Young Artists Committee Chair Jane Latta to introduce the students who have been recognized for their outstanding art pieces.
Janine Worms from McGowan Elementary, Leah Claire from Arthur Stevenson Elementary, Sharon Richards from Westside Secondary, Lauren O'Neill from Arthur Stevenson Elementary, Melissa Pavlik from Kamloops School of the Arts, and Kareem Sadek from Kamloops School of the Arts. You can see we have an extensive committee, which is wonderful. This year, the committee members spent an evening adjudicating and reviewing the young artists' submissions and reading artists' statements. This room was full of beautiful, beautiful artwork. It was a wonderful night, very rich in discussion and thought. School District Seventy-three young artists were very symbolic in their visual representations this year, and it was clear that they took a lot of time and thought and energy into preparing their pieces like they do every year. The pieces were very powerful, and I'm not sure if you had a chance to review them in the foyer, but really, really strong pieces with with powerful messages that are meaningful and important to them. This year was interesting, though, because we changed the order of the reception and the conference. In years previous, we had the reception the evening before that kind of kicked off our event, and then the next day it was a full conference. This year, because of scheduling concerns, we did our conference followed by our reception. And we took time to reflect about that, and it was interesting. We observed that a lot of our students were able to, which I guess they did previous years, but they were able to connect with other students that were that shared a common interest and a passion in the arts. And so the evening reception, suddenly these students were engaging, showing each other their artwork and talking about their piece, which was really, really cool and exciting. We continued this year. We started it last year, but we also continued with the idea of the three-D artwork pieces. And this year, we had even more that was submitted, which was really, really neat. We also continued to increase the number of photography submissions. So photography is another area that continues to develop and grow in the arts, and some with the digital imagery advances. So we we are continuing to evolve and grow in that area, which is really neat. This evening, we are recognizing twenty-one pieces of art, which is about the same what we do each year. And these pieces were selected to be framed, and they'll be hung at the school board office for the next school year. All of these pieces of art were framed at the old courthouse for the reception. But tonight, we want to formally recognize these young people and their chosen pieces. Each piece has a story and a message that the artwork conveys, and you're going to hear that from them. We'd like to share it with you tonight, and I'm sure you'll have questions and comments after they speak at the end. So without further ado, we want to hear from our students. Some of our students had other commitments. It's a busy time of year. So our committee will be reading their piece, and we'll be able to review it on the screen. So starting us off, Tiffany.
All right, I have the pleasure of reading for Finn Walker. He actually was a former student of mine at Barrier Elementary, so I feel honored to be able to read for him. The piece is called "Up the River." My art piece is called "Up the River." I faced a lot of challenges, like making sure I didn't burn myself and pressing down hard enough to make a good dark line. I used geometric shapes from the body and a light blue pencil crayon for the rapids. My dad helped me cut the wood, then I had to sand it. I came up with a body of the salmon for the salmon and traced carefully to get a nice outline to start. When I finished, I started coloring, and it turned out to be better than I expected. I'm very proud of what I have done.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Aurora B. Atchison. The title of my painting is "Northern Flicker." My painting is of a northern flicker on a tree with a blurry green background. I used oil paint on canvas and a texture technique using my palette knife. My inspiration for this painting was a class project on birds. When I did this painting, I learned about palette painting, which was really fun. I want to learn more about artistic design, sketching, and perspective for my future work. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Danica Ruston. I'm a grade four student at Lloyd George Elementary. My my painting is called "Evening Forest." I used acrylic paints on thick watercolor paper and followed along with Bob Ross. I didn't have the same colors, materials, tours, tools, or technique, but I did my best, and it was fun. For example, when I used paint, when he used the painting knife, I used a wooden fork. It was fun. It was fun to experiment with different colors and see how they blend together. I would like to work with my grandpa because he used oil paints, has the right tools, and he knows what he's doing.
Hello, my name is Henley Wood, and I'm from Burr Edward Science and Technology School, and I'm in grade five. My painting is titled "Denman Island." My artwork shows a calm ocean overcasting a beach on Denman Island. This is an island I go every year with my family, and we love it. Because I go there every year, it inspired me to create to create a painting showing it. My artwork is an acrylic landscape painting. One of the elements of art I use most is landscape, is texture. You can see the texture in the waves, the rocks, and the old driftwood. Another one I use is color almost everywhere. The color creates depth in the water and in the wood. I want to get better at putting more depth in my paintings. I like the way my painting looks.
My name is Ally Dawn. I go to McGowan Park Elementary, and I'm in grade five. The title of my artwork is called "A World Full of Wonder and Lots of Lipstick." I like to think of my art as a reflection of my childhood. Watercolor, marker, and pencil crayon all together makes me feel happy. It's messy, but I love it. I decided to put together this art because looking back at my younger self feels heartwarming to me. And when people see it, I want them to think about the happiest times of their lives. I decided to create this piece after I saw a picture of me when I was younger, putting on my mom's lipstick. I thought it looked cute, and that's when I decided, why not make art from it? I chose to do watercolor because I wanted to step out of my comfort zone and experiment with something new. I think I learned to spend more time looking at my work. I really like it, but I could have paid more attention to the detail. Otherwise, it feels pretty fitting to me.
I have Amber Carlberg from my school, Ralph Bell, and she's in grade five, and her artwork today is Mystic Waterfall. The painting I completed is of a beautiful waterfall. I used the acrylic paint and different sizes of brushes to complete this painting. The reason I chose to paint a waterfall is because I enjoy painting nature scenes, and I love waterfalls because they are calming. My main goal for this painting was to make it look realistic and for the waterfall to stand out. After completing my picture, I felt satisfied with how the waterfall turned out. However, looking back, I see that there are some colors I might adjust to improve the appearance of the waterfall. Overall, creating Mystic Waterfall was fun, and I feel proud of the piece of art that I completed. I also have Neve Connolly from Ralph Bell as well, and she did "Bridge at Sundown." The painting is of a bridge with a river under it, and it is a sunset with clouds. The paints I used were watercolors, and the technique I used was laying colors. I got the idea from a book I was reading. The front cover had a picture that had layered colors. This helped me with my highlighting and creating shades. The final piece did turn out how I wanted it. The only thing that I would do differently is make the flowers in the river smaller.
Hi, my name is Amelia Pavlik. I'm from Kamloops School of the Arts, and I'm in grade five. I wanted to make this sculpture because I love the ocean and the fish swim in the ocean, because my dad has a saltwater fish tank. I made this piece of art with three things. The first thing I made it was with Fimo. Fima is a type of clay that when you are done sculpting, you can bake it, and it will turn hard. The second thing I used was three rocks that kind of looked like dried-up coral. The last thing was resin. Resin is a type of sculpting material that it just hardens over time. If I could change anything about my sculpture, I would change, I would put a bit more effort into the fish.
Hello, I am reading this on behalf of Winston Jones, and he's a student at Pacific Way Elementary, which is my school, and he's in grade six. His title, his piece is titled "The Ski Lift." I made this art piece to represent my love for skiing. The two guys that are on it represent me and my brother. I used scrap metal, a welder, and the skills that my stepdad taught me. Something I struggled with was whether to paint it or just leave it. I think I made the right decision by not painting it because I wanted my piece to be different. Thank you for reading all about my metalwork art piece.
Hello, I am Bristol Tolentino from Kamloops School of the Arts, and I'm in grade six. The title of my piece is Thoughts. It's a mixed media artwork on a canvas combining texture and text. The message that I wanted to show from my art is the thoughts of someone's head when creating or making something. I wanted to go for bully-in-the-head kind of thoughts.
Good evening. I'm reading on behalf of Hudson Jones, who is in grade six at Summit Elementary, and Hudson's piece is called "Moonfall Bridge." My artwork is called "Moonfall Bridge." This pencil drawing shows a broken world with detailed microhouses on both sides of a steep mountain. Everything in the drawing feels fragile, cracked, abandoned, and in disrepair, making you feel as though it is from a video game world. It's reminiscent of a hidden world that is slowly falling apart. I really like how this drawing came together. I enjoy creating microdrawings and love all the attention to detail in the project.
Sorry, it's me again. We have Kate Anne Akins, who is from Barrier Elementary as well, and she is in grade six, and her piece is called "The River." I started taking photos when I joined the Yellowhead Four-H Club Photography Project Group. I really like taking the landscape and portrait photos. For this photo, I was on a walk along the North Thompson River in the fall. Then I edited it to make it look artsy. I really like the shades of blue. I gave my grandma and grandpa a copy for Christmas.
Hi, my name is Fran Fred. I go to Juniper Ridge Elementary, and I'm in grade six. My art piece is called "The Optimistic Owl." My drawing was an expression of my love for birds. I love the way birds fly in the sky with their feathers swaying in the wind. So I tried to express that with the strokes of the pencil and charcoal. I used cardstock paper because then I could smudge the pencil if I needed to. I chose an owl because owls are very calm and wise, so I tried to put that into my drawing, making her appear thoughtful and bold. Thank you for reading.
My name is Tomasz Biok, and I'm going to be reading on behalf of Hazel Smith from Summit Elementary in grade six. "The Squirrel Escape." My artwork is called "The Squirrel Escape." I chose to create this piece because I feel that it is easier for my hands and mind to work with three-D rather than pencil and paper. A video I saw inspired me to try to create an exciting three-piece of artwork, three-D piece of artwork. I loved what I saw, and I wanted to make something like it, but different and uniquely my own. I was so happy with how my artwork turned out. I'm looking forward to creating many more three-D pieces in my future.
Hello, everyone. I'm Melissa Pavlik, and I'm on the committee, and I'm reading on behalf of Kalen Binka. She's at Westside Elementary School, and she's in grade six. Her piece is called "Peace Waves." My artwork is called "Peace Waves." I used acrylic paint that were layered on canvas. Painting the water was my favorite part. I wanted the water to accent most of the canvas, so I focused my time and detail on it. I expressed a lot of feelings of home and comfort in my painting. I really wanted to make an art piece for my mom to give to her. She was my inspiration. At first, I wasn't happy with my art, but over time, I learned to love it, as I ended up enjoying the process. All right, and now I'm going to... Alana? There we go. Now I'm reading. That is the wrong one. Okay.
My name's Eden Clark, and I go to Pacific Way Elementary in grade seven. This is a portrait of one of my very best friends. Recently, I have started trying to draw realistic portraits, and this is a piece I'm quite proud of. I used graphite pencil for sketching and charcoal for shading, hair and eyes. Maya and I met a few years ago, and I'm so grateful for this special friendship. My goal was for this portrait to look exactly like her so that others would know it was Maya. I'm very happy with the results of this piece. It looks so much like my good friend.
Hello, my name is Clover Yuen, and I'm in grade seven, and I'm from Pacific Way. My art is called "The Sky Palace." This building exists in China. The mysterious outline and pretty colors of the building inspire me to paint it. I used watercolors for the main building and pencil crayons for small details. I was debating whether or not I should outline the building, but I decided it would be too bold, so I used a pencil crayon to outline instead. It really brought out the majestic shape of the building and added the final touch.
Hello, my name is Lyric. Lyric Kaczynski, they didn't put my last name for some reason. The title, I'm from Westman Elementary, grade seven. The title of my painting is "Within the Trees." For young artists, I chose to do an oil painting of nature. I used six paints, many brushes, and different tools. I enjoyed making this painting, and I don't think art should have a specific meaning. Whatever you interpret from it is what it should mean to you. People could look at this and think two different things, and that is what I think is so cool about art. I had fun and learned from this painting, and I hope to do another one soon.
Good evening. My name is Leah Claire, and I have the pleasure of reading for one of my students from Arthur Stevenson Elementary in grade seven, Jade Gilchrist, and her piece is called "Melody." This piece is named after one of my best friends. She inspired me to make this piece. She is someone that I appreciate and respect. I know that her favorite flower is the hibiscus flower, so that's what I made. The materials I used to make this piece were string, fabric, and my needle. This piece of art took me about a month to finish because my needles kept breaking. I went through seven needles in total, but I think it was worth it. I tried my best to show Melody how much I care for her. This piece helped me learn my strengths and weaknesses. This piece turned out exactly what I had hoped. I am very happy with how it turned out. If I were to do it again, I would do more kinds of stitches.
All right, it's me again. I'm reading on behalf of Dahlia Leary from Raft River, grade seven, and her piece is called "Clyde." My art piece is called Clyde because that's my cat's name. The reason why, the reason I drew that drawing is because it's for my mom for Christmas, and I originally only drew one of our cats, but she wanted both. I wanted to show how cute but serious he looks all at the same time. And the fact that he's more bold shapes compared to my other drawings of cats, which usually have a rounder face. I started by drawing in pencil on a canvas, so I at least got an idea down. Then I later drew over it with pen, and after I did that, I put the last detail, such as the whiskers and fur. I'm happy how it turned out because it looks pretty similar to him. If I were to do anything differently, I think I would draw the ears differently because, in my opinion, it looks a little too small.
Hi, my name is Kai Akili. I am a grade seven student at Arthur Stevenson. I created the three-D Fire and Ice piece with the air-dry clay, multiple-sized paintbrushes, multiple acrylic paints with a canvas underneath as well. What inspired me to make this art piece is that I actually submitted a art piece last year that was similar, but it was more two-D compared to this year. With it being my last year in elementary school, I decided to do something better compared to last year. So I decided to make it even more three-D compared to last year.
Thank you so much. As you can see, that we had such a variety of different materials and textures and stories, and each one had had meaning and purpose. I'm wondering if there are any questions or comments from the floor now.
Thank you very much, Principal Latta. I will turn it over to trustees to see if anyone has any questions, comments. Yes, trustee Sim.
Thanks. They were also different from last year, and just, I mean, creative, it says it, but it really is terrific work. I remember walking in and seeing the one with lipstick, and it just popping out, so it was really great. My question is for those who used watercolors, or sorry, oil. And anytime I've kind of touched or been in contact with oil, it smudges so easily. How are you able to get such precise work of your projects? Like, there was no smudging. It really articulated some of the details beautifully.
Well, we use all different types of paintbrushes, and we try not to get our elbows in the way, and definitely don't wear white clothes. And it's, we paint on an easel, so the table isn't flat, so you don't rub anything.
I'm just going to ask you one more, because although you don't, but tell me how you must hold your hand so it doesn't shake, because you really got great detail.
Well, you, I just hold my hand how I hold my hand. It doesn't really matter.
I think maybe that's why it's called talent, because some people like me would certainly smudge, and it wouldn't be talent, it would be four-D. So congratulations. It was nice to see what you did. It was nice to see what you did.
The reason where it doesn't smudge sometimes and if your hand's too shaky, people like grow their pinky fingernails and they can like place that on to steady it. And then it's just a quick little easy fix if it does make a mark. And you always like, the thick, the paint is so thick that when you get like a clean brush and put it on top, it won't like mix with the other colors unless we want it to.
Okay. Thank you. Good artist tip.
For me, I just want to say my hand was shaking. And if, if I saw something smudge, I would grab up like a paper towel and try to get it precisely off as soon as I can. So it doesn't like quickly dry or something.
That just addresses every little bit. Thank you very much for those of you who responded.
Yes, Trustee Hickson.
It breaks my heart I couldn't come to this year's reception. I had a really bad heat stroke. I was so prepared to come, but I just couldn't make it out to that courthouse. Too hot. I was curious, did anybody feel limited by the material they're using or what medium they're working on? Was there any ideas that you feel couldn't get expressed because you couldn't work on clay or a computer? If there's anything you could add or change, what would you want included in your classes?
What I would change to my piece is that when I created the fire piece, I made more the flames more kind of like a cylinder in a way. So I would, if I was to create it again, I would make it more look like a flame than just like worms put on. Like you can kind of see, it kind of just looks like worms basically for the flame sides for the multiple little like sprouts of flame.
Yes, Trustee Sim.
I did have one more and it was... Is it Briston? Did I get that right? Bristol? Sorry, that's my writing, which is why I'm not an artist. I'm wondering, because you could, you could very faintly tell in the slide and I bet you if I had gone in person, I could have seen it. But there seemed to be some words that were kind of brushed under. And I'm wondering, what, what are the, what are the bully in the head thoughts? Like what are some of those words that were a part of your work?
Honestly, that's kind of what I was thinking when I was making it. I didn't really like it at the time. I, I painted it something different. It was originally focusing on the loss of someone. And I repainted it all over again. I had stabbed the canvas and I had to cover it with everything. So that was kind of like what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's a really, it's funny how accidents become great impact, huh? Yeah.
I'm not seeing any other questions from trustees. I'll just maybe make a comment and then I'll turn it over to, to you, Dr. Nixon. First of all, I wanted to thank you on behalf of the Board of Education. I think it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of courage to put your creativity into art form and have people view it and people see it. And I think that when we walk through, it's interesting because we know that at the board office, we hear every year about how it's a bit of a battle around who gets to be closest to different pieces of art, who gets them in their offices, things like that. And as trustees, we will absolutely love the fact that we get the cards to take home. Former trustees still talk about how they wish they continued to get the cards. So it's something that is very meaningful for us. So I really wanted to thank you for that. The one thing that I wanted to add as well, when I look at the kind of talent that has been presented again this year and year after year, it actually makes me think of a young lady who was a young artist winner or one of the people who was celebrated back in elementary school, who actually this year was accepted into Emily Carr but also designed the logo for Westside Secondary, a new logo. So I think that there are lots of things that come out of incredible talent and incredible arts within our, our district. And I'm so looking forward to, to seeing what comes next for you all and future projects and things like that. And there are a couple of you that I was hoping to actually ask to come and chair the rest of the meeting because you're incredibly well spoken, probably better, better than I am. So a lot of gratitude to you and to all of the staff and the, the adults who assist in, in supporting the, the young artists as well. And Dr. Nixon, I'll turn it over to you to close this education topic this evening.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to share the same sentiment that really, I can tell that your artwork touched your heart because they touched my heart. I could feel the feelings, whether it was sadness or whether it was gladness or whether it was your favorite pet. You want to show how he could look grumpy sometimes. It just all came through and it shows your passion. So I really appreciate the teachers, the district staff, and all the support staff who help young artists as well. Because I know you, you kind of get together every year and it's, it's truly clearly a passion of the staff as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
So Principal Lada, at the end of every education topic, we let people know they are welcome to stay, but they are free to go. We do have another presentation coming up with the Owl Awards Celebration. So we'll give you a couple of minutes to, yeah, to settle out and then we'll start the next agenda item. Is this on? Is this on? Or is, okay, perfect. Thank you, everyone. We will continue on with our meeting. This is the least favorite position I think I've ever been in to chair a meeting standing at a podium. So we'll move on to item next. This evening, we have no public inquiries, petitions, or written presentations, nothing from parent advisory groups or district parent advisory groups, which moves us on to reports from superintendent of schools. Dr. Nixon, I'll turn it over to you for 8.1, the Owl Award Celebration.
Thank you through you, Board Chair Greve, to the board. At this time, we celebrate and acknowledge individuals who are the successful nominees for the Owl Award for Excellence in Public Education. This has been a board award since 2016. Prior to Board Chair Greve sharing the results this evening, I want to thank the Owl Committee members who have served in their roles to prepare and revise criteria for this award based on feedback from the community. And they've invested many hours into reviewing and adjudicating many applications. This Associate Superintendent Wedrick, Director Wayne Pennett, former Principal Dave McDonald, current Principals Dom Camita and Dave Conroy, Dana Lee Baker, an instructor at TRU, and Jade Seymour from Tecumlups. And a special thank you to Dana Hayman and Candace Lamont, who coordinates all the schedules and the correspondence, and Director Chelsea Eisner, who takes care of all aspects of the communications. It's now time for Board Chair Greve to share about this year's recipient. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nixon. So we wanted to say a welcome to all of our community members who have come and especially our award winners this evening and those who nominated them and who are here to support them this evening as well. The Owl Award for Excellence in Public Education has been a Board of Education award since 2016. The award recognizes an individual, a group, or an organization who is a role model, someone who is selfless, generous, and who has made significant, system-wide, outstanding contributions to public education in school district number 73 over a period of five years or more. The Owl Award Committee had a competitive application process as they do every year. And there is always a number of worthy candidates who could have qualified for this award. So tonight, it is my pleasure to present the Owl Awards for 2025. So at this time, I would like to call up Dr. Anne Chieken. Did I say that wrong? No, come on up. Thank you. So I'm going to read a little bit about you if that's okay? You're good? So I want to, first of all, I want to thank Dr. Anusha Venkataraman. I'm hoping I'm saying that correctly, who submitted your nomination package along with several letters of support. In that package, it was clear that you have had over 23 years of local, regional, and provincial impact on students and public education through your research and work in schools to make science and education come alive for our students. Some examples of the service include, but they're not limited to. Since 2012, you have worked with over 1,000 students in over 40 schools in our districts to further hands-on approaches to science education. In 2022, you worked with Morgan Whitehouse and Dr. Natasha Ramu Singh to secure TRU Instructional Innovation Grant for the Actions for Science Education KDA 16 project, which was aimed at increasing awareness of microbiology and microchemistry, or sorry, biochemistry. You secured grant funding for a 3D printer now housed at Bruce Edwards Science and Technology School, enhancing STEM education. You supported us as a collaborative researcher on the research project entitled "Supporting Curiosity-Driven Inquiry-Based Science Education Online Through a Community of Inquiry Partnership: Rethinking Pedagogical Approaches," sorry, during the COVID-19 pandemic. This collaboration was a year-long action research project that changed practices across our schools. The committee appreciated how you demonstrated selflessness and generosity by giving of your time in our schools and applying for grants to support our students. Thank you for all that you've done to support our schools and to further research in science education. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Now, thank you very much and thank you, everyone, you know, on the board and the school districts. And also thank you to my husbands and my, my son who's here with me today. For me, I mean, I feel really honored to be awarded with this prestigious award. For me, receiving an award is never the end goal nor the intention. The, the humble process of being nominated and, and you know, the, the process of putting the, the package together helped, helped me reflect, reflect on, on, on my, my intentions and my will and core value, especially in science education. And having been a cave microbiologist for the past 25 years and 23 years of that, I have been at TRU, but back then it was UCC. I always enjoy going to schools in our school districts, to classes and to students. Actually, that is one example that made me feel I want to continue to do this even within my, you know, retirement in the next, I don't know how many years, but even if when I'm retired, I still want to do community outreach. I went out to, to Caillou's Elementary School, which is not in our school district, but is one of the remote schools that, that I volunteer for science world. Grade four student, you know, after a few hours of interacting with them, one of the girls raised her hand and she said, she asked me and my research student from TRU. I always took my research student with me to do community outreach. She asked the question, what would the world be like without microorganism? So that kind of the question made me feel that, you know, going out to local schools, each class at the times, it's actually worth it. Thank you so very much for your support and for this honorable award. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to move on to our second recipient this evening. So I want to thank, thank you to Ms. Rebecca Anderson for submitting your nomination package. I want to actually invite up Lori Jane Foes. I want to share a few of the accomplishments highlighted in your nomination package as well. So you have had over 25-plus years, years as a career as a music educator and impacted students inside of our schools and across the district through your multiple roles. You directed the Kamloops Thompson Children's Choir and the Kamloops Thompson Honor Choir for over 10 years, inspiring hundreds of students over that time. You also developed teacher's expertise in your role as the district fine arts coordinator and were known for dedicating countless hours to helping new music teachers to set up their classrooms and supporting with mentorship in conducting and planning and implementing music concerts and events. There were stories of how you took time with teachers who were struggling, feeling uninspired, or who needed support. And you were always there with tea and a thoughtful ear. The committee learned firsthand from your supporters about the many ways that you developed and supported music education in the rural areas as well as the urban center of Kamloops. You are described as having a true passion for music and you know firsthand what music can do to invigorate learners who are searching for ways to share their creativity. And Lori Jane, congratulations on being an Owl Award recipient this year. And I want to invite you to say a few words if you'd like.
Thank you so much. I am honored and humbled to receive this award. As my good friends know, usually I'm, I'm often on stage, but it's always my back to the stage. So that's the, that's my place that I prefer. So I don't, I don't really feel like I, I need the accolades, but I am humbled and honored today to receive this. I am so grateful to the support systems that I've had for so many years in this school district. I can honestly say in every school that I've been in, I've had principals that have been so supportive of arts education and specifically my music program, not just saying that they know it's important, but actually making real things happen and supporting me in scheduling in space. And, well, my principal was setting up my music, my sound system today for a concert that I have tomorrow. So just being so amazing like that. And I'm just so grateful for you guys who are at the back and my kids. And thank you so much. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Wait, I'm going to make a run back from my other desk. As we say again to everybody in the gallery, you are welcome to stay, but you are free to go. And again, one more round of applause for our Owl Award recipients this evening. Okay, Dr. Nixon, does that conclude that agenda item for you this evening?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item next is yours as well, the annual anaphylaxis report.
Sorry. Through you, Board Chair Greve, to the board. So in Board Policy 2, the board is committed to health and safety of all students and staff. And in Administrative Procedure 317, anaphylaxis, it outlines the duty of care we have for those who have severe allergies, which includes reporting annually to the board the number of anaphylaxis-at-risk students and the number of anaphylactic incidents for the year. So you will notice that in this report, I will jump right to page 17. We have 252 students in the district who have been identified by a parent or guardian and confirmed by a physician as anaphylactic, representing 1.5% of the student population, which is slightly representing 1.5% of the student population, which is slightly less than last year at 1.7. The number of incidents requiring administration, self or staff, of epinephrine was in elementary schools, zero, and secondary schools, three administrations. You'll see there were a total of six confirmed instances of anaphylaxis, and in one case, an elementary student did not receive or was not administered epinephrine, an epinephrine auto-injector, and the student was transported to receive medical treatment by a parent. Of the remaining five incidents, one student experienced three separate episodes and received two doses of epinephrine before being transported to the hospital. And in the remaining incidents, no epinephrine was administered. So the district provides annual anaphylaxis training for all staff who interact with and supervise students, including teachers, bus drivers, school administrators, certified education assistants, indigenous education workers, and school-based clerical staff. You will note that the training covers how to recognize signs and symptoms and when someone has experienced an anaphylactic reactions. The training is delivered by public health nurses and the manager of health and safety through online learning portal opportunities. And really, this is just to emphasize that we really do need to have this training, and we really, we do have instances, albeit not many, they're very serious. So it's, it's simply information for the Board.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nixon. Trustees, this agenda item was presented for information purposes. Are there any questions on this agenda item for Dr. Nixon? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item next. Eight point three is yours as well, Maintenance of Order Annual Report.
No, thank you. Through you, Board Chair Greve to the Board. The health and safety of students and staff and visitors to our schools and district facilities is a legislative as well as an ethical responsibility. So one aspect of this legislative duty is to review the number of incidents that are to do with disturbing the orderly proceedings of a school. I will actually, in the spirit of time, turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Madison Riley, who did the work on this and will be able to provide you with just a summary of what, what's happened with maintenance order requests this year.
Thanks so much, Superintendent Nixon. Through your chair, Greve, to the Board. Section 177 of the School Act prohibits the disturbance or interruption of school proceedings of official school functions and authorizes principals to direct individuals to leave school property and call for assistance from a peace officer if needed. In accordance with School Board Administrative Procedure 407, Maintenance of Order, the superintendent will provide an annual report to the Board of Education on the use of exclusion based on Section 177 of the School Act. This year's annual review indicates that during the 2024-2025 school year, a maintenance of order was issued nineteen times in School District 73. Thirteen of those incidents were issued to youth who presented a threat to other student safety or exhibited continued negative behavioral choices while at a school. They did not attend. And additionally, there were six parents who were also issued a maintenance of order during the 2024-2025 school year. And I'm here for any questions the Board may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Riley. Our trustees, do you have any questions on this agenda item that was presented for information purposes this evening? All right, seeing none, I am kind of envious of your mic, though. It's, no, 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 I'm kidding, I don't want to switch. It just sounded much more clear than mine. All right, seeing none, thank you very much for that report. Moving on to item next, Dr. Nixon.
Thank you. So early closure dates, through you, Board Chair Greve to the Board. In Board Policy 2, the Board approves the district calendar in accordance with legislation and collective agreements. And within the school calendar regulation, we do have the minimum number of hours of instruction that a Board must offer to students, and of course, they're identified there. I'm just going to suggest that I think what's important here for the background is a school principal identifies the number of instructional days and multiplies it by the number of minutes or instructional hours per day to determine the total hours of instruction for each grade. So the difference between the total hours of instruction and the minimum hours of instruction provide those excess hours that can be used for adjusted days, like on the first day and the last day of school in elementary. So they only have in elementary two early closure days, and that's because they do not have any excess hours from which to make any more adjustments. However, in secondary schools, they do tend to exceed the minimum number of hours, and therefore, they have one early closure day in semester one and one in semester two. And each, each of the secondary schools has provided those as well as the elementary schools in the appendix. This report is for recommendation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nixon. Trustees, you will see on page twenty-three of your package that this agenda item does come with a recommendation. Is there any discussion or questions for Dr. Nixon or any operation staff before we look at entertaining a motion this evening? All right, I'm not seeing any questions. Is there anyone who wants to move the motion on page twenty-three that the Board approves the proposed 2025-2026 early closures in elementary and secondary schools in School District Number Seventy-three, Canlis Thompson, as outlined? Moved by Vice Chair Kershaw. Do I have a second or seconded by Trustee Kang? Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, I'm seeing no discussion. I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you, and opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item next, Dr. Nixon, the Omri Indigenous Student Summit.
Thank you. Through you, Board Chair Greve to the Board. In Board Policy 2, the Board celebrates student success, and in the two district strategic plan prioritizes well-being of students and staff, and in the cultural and identity priority aims for every student to develop a sense of identity in individual, as, as individuals, and, and develops cultural safety and humility in communities. The summit, the Indigenous Student Summit began two years ago, and I wanted to just simply share that District Principal Bowden and Assistant Superintendent Mattis really do a wonderful job explaining this, and I am going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Mattis or District Principal Bowden to provide their report. Thank you.
White, Cook, White, Tap, Superintendent Nixon, through Chair Greve and trustees. It's my honor to talk about the Indigenous Student Summit, which happened. It was the third one on May first and second this year. It was a gathering of indigenous student leaders from eleven school districts. We gathered at TRU to talk about student mental health. We had about a hundred and fifty students in participation, and they chose the topic of indigenous student mental health to discuss and, and share their voice in their calls to action. So I'm, I'm going to actually turn this over because we, we have a great video that was put together. You also have in your packages the results and final report from that student summit that's been shared provincially as well as to all eleven districts. It's very powerful to hear students talk about mental health and their calls to action at a school level, at a district level, and at provincial level. So please enjoy this video talking about the students and the actual summit.
This is the Okavale River Regional Indigenous Education Council's third Annual Student Leadership Summit. And it's drawing, I think we have sixty more students in the atmosphere. So sixty more courageous voices in making a difference in education and toward education.
Your voice, your story, you take action. Your voice matters. What you say will be heard, documented, and will help shape real change in our districts and across all of AC. But look at another generation, and I'm looking at them now, our future leaders. And whatever you choose to do in your life, just remember your voice is important.
This is the Indigenous Student Leadership Summit. So we are hosted by Thompson Rivers University here in Canlis. This year's focus is more about mental health. It's a good opportunity to be able to meet more of your culture. We got to learn a lot about mental health, and we're doing like breakaway classes. We're all learning and discussing together to make a change.
It means a lot to me. It's my third year doing it. So I think I've grown as a person. It's really nice to see that connection and then see everybody's different perspectives and experiences coming together.
Hopefully feel more connected and less like alone.
So many people go through substance abuse and being disconnected from their culture and stuff like that. And I feel like him telling his story really helps people reconnect with the culture.
I believe we have the power to change anything that we want in our life. We have the power to take any barrier that's been put in front of us and decompress that and take that away and do the work that we need and we can walk past it. We are not defined by our trauma. I can tell you that I'm not defined by my trauma. But my trauma led me to a place that makes me a very, very lovely human being.
I really hope the school, the school district and everybody in the province really sees that indigenous knowledge systems are very much as significant as Western knowledge systems, and we need to be teaching those same ways inside classrooms and not have it be a separate part of the curriculum, just to check a box.
Children have always taught many good things such as patience, love, and most importantly, keep that childlike spirit amongst the people. And it was to empower the children to make up their own mind about their name was right or wrong, not to shame or humiliation children.
These children have an unbelievable ability to lead us in the future.
Sharing our stories. So elder knowledge keepers coming down to schools and talking to Aboriginal and non-Aboriginal students of them are issuing stories. The next thing we talked about was we want more depending on the school or future start, more indigenous student leadership councils. We just think a very good thing I got to be in one, it was such a good experience and there's other people like me up there and that I had a community to go to.
You are really in the heart of this work, this special day. Your stories matter. Your voice matters. When you speak your truths, we have a word in this machine for that, we have a machine. And lift each other up. You got only your space for healing and connection, but you also become the architects of lasting change in our schools, in our communities, in your home.
So it was a really powerful two days, just like the year before when we talked about indigenous specific anti-racism. It's so inspiring to hear student voice, be empowered and give direction on what they feel they think that we can do to help uplift them and address things like mental health and like anti-racism. Students facilitated the sessions. They planned the sessions with our support, of course, but it really came from the students and, and folks are listening, so, and they see that. So it's an honor to share this small moment with you today around the Omri Summit and be honored if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Trustees, do you have any questions on this agenda item? Which has been presented for information? I actually just had one, District Principal Bowden. So when the students decide sort of what they want the theme of the, the summit to be, do you look for keynote speakers and things like that to come in and run the sessions? Or is it done through internal staff, through ST73?
It's, it's really a year process. We start the discussion with the students in the fall, and they talk about what are the key burning topics in their mind around what is going to help them be successful in education and in their lives. So we discuss several topics, and then when we get to the keynote piece, we actually ask them who. We do provide them with some folks, if, you know, if needed, and they go through the selection process themselves on who they want to be the keynote. Now, we asked them to pick two or three, of course, because sometimes they aren't available, but really comes from them who they want to hear.
Right, and so, sorry, just supplemental to that. So do you bring them like a list of potential keynotes? Or you're saying that you ask them to brainstorm who they would like to hear from?
We, we do both. So this year, this was, this fellow here that came was one of their selections. So they do prefer to hear from someone local. And of course, we do give them a budget, so they have to be within the budget. But yeah, we bring a list, they bring, we, we ask them to go away and bring back a list, and then we compile that and go through it, and they vote on it.
Amazing, thank you. Are there any other questions or questions from trustees? All right, seeing none, Dr. Nixon, does that conclude this agenda item for you this evening?
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to item next, eight point six, District Powwow and National Indigenous People's Day.
Thank you. Through you, Board Chair Greve to the Board. In Board Policy 2, the Board is committed to student success of all district students. And as the Board is well aware, it's so important and a cornerstone to advocate for truth and reconciliation is central to the governance and annual work plan framework of the Board. On May twelfth, at the regular public board meeting, the Board reviewed Cultural Days of Importance to confirm our district's commitment to continuing to learn together about indigenous histories, perspectives, and ceremonial practices. There are local, provincial, national, and international cultural days of importance that students, staff, and parents celebrate together to promote the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our district. District Principal Mike Bowden and Assistant Superintendent Mattis will outline the remaining days of indigenous celebration in our district and how to be involved.
Kuksham, Superintendent Nixon, through Chair Greve, trustees. It's my honor again to talk a little bit about these two events that one's coming up and one has happened. It's a great time of year for indigenous culture in Canada. It's the Indigenous National Indigenous History Month, and we do a number of things to celebrate that. And one of the bigger things that we do is the School District Powwow, and we had another successful year at the Canlis Powwow Arbor. We invite all of the grade five students in the school district to attend and provide busing to that. It's significant in several ways. The Powwow is significant in that it's always a celebration and gathering of different indigenous cultures to come and perform and celebrate and, and talk about their cultures and meet and connect. So we wanted students across the district to experience that. And of course, capacity-wise, we can only handle so many, including our busing. So we did choose many years back to just invite the grade five students for a couple of reasons. One, those students are quite enthusiastic and, and aren't quite stuck in the cool zone, so they do go out and participate and dance and, and enjoy the, the culture. The other piece is that grade five is about this, the grade area where indigenous history and culture is, is significant in that in the curriculum. So we invite those grade five students. This year, we didn't quite get them all. We had some busing challenges around getting busing there. So I know in the report it says two thousand students, but we're about half that, around a thousand. But if you can imagine a thousand students still at the Arbor, participating in celebrating culture and learning about culture. The other significant piece to this is that even when I went around and talked to other students, it's the first time they've been on a reservation other than driving through and stopping maybe at a convenience store or gas station. So it really breaks down that barrier of being on the reservation. Significant in Canlis because, of course, it's in the shadow of the residential school, and it's really a demonstration of resilience. It's not a traditional Powwow in the sense of the word. It's more of a learning opportunity. So we do lots of learning activities to learn about the different dances, why they're important, why they're significant, and allow students from every culture to come out onto the Powwow grounds and learn and participate on the land and, and dance the dances and celebrate with everybody else. So it's a, it's a great connecting event, and it was so powerful. I have to say, you know, all of the work that goes into an event that has a thousand students in, in one area and to get the elders there and the and to get the elders there and the traditional dancers there to demonstrate is a lot of work. But it's probably one of the most significant bucket filling events for me to see the, the pride of the indigenous students as they feel like they can really demonstrate their identity and their culture and the, the other students who are participating in that event. So if you ever get a chance to stop by, we plan on continue having them. It's just a great, great event for the school district, for the students and for, and for the adults that are participating. The other one is the, the National Indigenous Peoples' Day coming up this Friday. Actually, it's Saturday is the official day, but schools will be celebrating it on Friday. They are, every school, I believe, is going to be doing something significant for that day and they've shared it with us. We've asked schools to reach out to trustees, invite you, to invite you to their events. And we're excited to see what's going to be happening on that day and, and excited to see the growth of what happens on that day as far as celebrating indigenous culture across the school district from where we were even five years ago. So.
Thank you very much. Trustees, do you have any questions on this agenda item that's been presented for information purposes this evening? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, District Principal Bowden. Moving on to item next, eight point seven, out of province field trip, SKSS to Montreal.
Thank you. Through you, Board Chair Greve to the board. As per Administrative Procedure 260 field trips, this memo is for the Board of Education's approval. So Principal Chris Primack from South Calmup Secondary is requesting approval for 22 students to travel to Montreal, Quebec from April 2nd to 6th in 2026. Basically, this trip is the one that is, one that they have done before and they travel, they get to experience Montreal and Quebec City through a cultural and musical lens. Students attend a Montreal, the Montreal Symphony Orchestra Concert at the Montreal Symphony House. And also they attend professional, a professional jazz dinner showcase. So students would have the opportunity also to explore other arts and see geographical features and visit historical sites that have curricular significance as well as bring science to life at the Montreal Biadome. So as well, French immersion students will have the opportunity to experience French Canadian culture firsthand. The itinerary includes many curricular connections and it's quite student driven and very engaging, involving the support of administration, teachers, and parents. So you will see the, the specifics there and parents have been consulted about the cost of this field trip. It is $2,700 plus spending money and they are, that's why they wanted to submit it now is to raise money and make sure that all students can go comfortably. So as the plans for this trip become finalized, I have said I will work with Principal Primack to ensure the itinerary and parent information are completed according to Administrative Procedure 260 and making sure we have ample supervisors. This reporting is for recommendation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nixon. Trustees, there is a recommendation on page 70 in your, or 71, sorry, in your, 70, in your package, I believe. Is that right? Sorry, I might be wrong here. Sorry, I lied. Page 40, it's in the page 40, sorry. Not intentionally trying to lie. It's on page 40. So there's a recommendation that the Board of Education approves 22 South County Secondary students to travel to Montreal, Quebec from April 2nd to 6th, 2026. We can certainly entertain a motion if there's any questions for Dr. Nixon, Nixon, before we go to that motion and now would be the time to ask. All right, I'm not seeing any trustee Kang, you're wanting to move the motion? Thank you. Do I have a second or? Thank you, trustee Hickson seconded. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And opposed, seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Nixon. Moving on to item next, eight point eight, good news.
Through you, Board Chair Greve to the board. So the district strategic plan, the board values connections, relationships, wellbeing, equity, and sustainability. Celebrating good news in our schools does recognize those stories that share how school communities build relationships, foster wellbeing, and aim for equity and sustainability. When we meet as school and district leaders every four to six weeks, we do informally share these good news stories. And these in particular were done at the school leaders meeting on June 5th. If the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Trustees, do you have any questions on this agenda item that's presented for information purposes this evening? All right, seeing none. Moving on to item next, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Through you, Board Chair Greve to the board. So based on Board Policy 12 as part of this reporting structure, I provide the activities that I do. And from May 12th to June 12th, 2025, this report highlights those activities. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nixon. Trustees, do you have any questions on this report that's been presented for information purposes? All right, I'm not seeing any. I do just want to mention, Dr. Nixon, I wanted to express my gratitude to you and all of the district staff who have supported not only district staff and students, but also trustees in all of the graduation long service awards and celebration events that have happened throughout the last number of weeks. I cannot even begin to imagine the magnitude of the undertaking it is for district staff to have these things come to fruition. So gratitude on behalf of the Board of Education for all of the, the work that has gone into this. And I know there's a few more celebrations to come, but just thank you so much for all the time. It makes us showing up a lot easier when, when everything is so well laid out for us ahead of time. So thank you. Dr. Nixon, does that conclude your agenda items for this evening?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to reports from Secretary Treasurer, Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Greve. District Principal Carmichael is here tonight to provide an update on the Feeding Futures School Foods Program.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Secretary Treasurer Talon. I'm still learning the fine art and science of delivering a memo without reading it verbatim. So if I may, I'll move to status and the big overview of status. I've spent the year working with principals, food champions, collaborating with my provincial colleagues, all in an effort to figure out how best to serve our students and the families to respond to those facing food insecurity and hunger in our schools. So every school in our district is unique. And so this year has really been getting to know the food programs, the volunteers, the staff that support those programs to best meet them where they're at in the circumstances they find themselves. And it's an amazing group of school leaders and volunteers to work with. I would like to just move to our community partners and focus on two community partnerships that have provided amazing service to our students in the district. The first being the Council's Food Bank. And just to get to it, over 10,000 starfish backpacks were distributed this year. That through the BGC organization, their work to support food fridges and outreach connections. The following food were provided to youth ages 11 to 18. And not to read every line item, over 34,000 food items from hot meals to juice boxes. The snacks were provided to students that really needed them, the students that might not necessarily access food programs during the day, but would access these programs after school at outreach or when the BGC would provide services at lunchtime. So an amazing amount of work through that organization to support our students. In regards to infrastructure, I did meet with Manager of Facilities Jim McFadden just recently in his team to discuss and prioritize food infrastructure planning in schools. And the following list gives you a snapshot of infrastructure that is planned or is already underway to try to get our schools as prepared as possible to deliver their food programs. I think it's important, I didn't note it in the memo, but to the school act, we cannot change any classroom into a food infrastructure area. So it takes a lot of creativity and a lot of work with administration and the maintenance to identify the upgrades that we're able to do. Again, to meet the, the needs of that school. So I really appreciate Manager of Facilities Jim McFadden and his team for really being diligent and thoughtful about how best to serve our schools. And also they have quite a keen awareness of addressing the needs in our rural schools. So I have deep appreciation for the work they do. It's not always perfect. There are time timelines that, you know, we'd like to meet and there's delays, but they're very aware of the importance of those services. In addition, the National Food Program has been discussed previously and in May, the district received $302,584 from the National Food Program. It was later in the year, so there is an awareness that we would not be able to expend those funds from May to June. And we have the leeway of next year to utilize those funds. It's, it makes it a little different than Feeding Futures. It still has the same intent, but we do have the flexibility with these funds to continue to meet our infrastructure needs. So to support those above projects listed. And I think the next piece, the student staff and parent testimonials is, it's more important than anything I could say in this memo. I think it's really going out to, to the students and the families that we provide. I would like to just provide the range of these comments do come from student staff and parents. They also come from elementary, secondary, rural, and our online school. I won't read them all, but the one that, they all stand out to me. There's, there's an amazing array of families, grandparents, extended families that are impacted by this. But one that stood out for me was provided by a student. And they went on to say, "The nutrition program goes above and beyond by providing nutritious lunches for students who might otherwise go hungry." "The provision of food, snacks, and hamburgers demonstrates a comprehensive approach to addressing food insecurity extending beyond the school day and into students' homes." And that was provided by a grade 11 student in one of our schools. And the one that probably hits home, that doesn't hit home to me, but my wife could have written it, is it takes away a lot of my daily stress when I don't have to worry about what to pack for a lunch. And that was expressed again and again in various forms by parents, just a true, how stressful it can be to try to plan lunches, to get something that your child will eat and to get them to take it with them to school. So there is a great appreciation for the additional services provided at the school. Attached is financial status. The following information is provided as an update prior to the end of the district's fiscal year on the financial aspect of Feeding Futures. The expenditures noted above are up till the end of May 2025 and are expected to increase to June 30th, 2025. I have worked throughout the year with finance and then communicating with schools to make sure that they're checking their budgets regularly, expending it. If they need support to reallocate those funds to target food, then I work closely with them to support that. Final expenditures for the District Powau Indigenous Graduation and School Meal Programs are yet to be reflected in this, the above figures. In comparison, last year, 1,900, just over that was initially allocated. And at that time last year, 818,000 remained with similar expenditures yet to be accounted. So in short, we're on a similar trajectory as we were last year. The district will receive 1.924 million this year in funding for the 2025 school year. Any funds remaining within this fund are permitted to be carried forward into the next school year. So in conclusion, and reflecting upon the past year, development of school food program reminds me of two first peoples principles of learning. That learning is holistic, reflective, reflexive, experimental, and relational, and it involves patience and time. And I think these two principles really reflect the work that has gone into our food programs, our meals and snacks, developing what we can to support our children and our students and their families. I would like to thank school leadership, food champions, indigenous education workers, certified education workers, school community volunteers, teachers, and the many individuals behind the scenes that support meal and snack programs in their respective schools. They continue to be creative, look for ways to meaningfully engage with students and family. Quite often, a great willingness to work with what they have and where they're at and continually ask for guidance and support. So this memo is provided for information and any questions?
Thank you very much for that presentation, which is, or the report for information purposes. Do we have questions? Yes, trustee Hickson.
Thank you so much for that presentation. That was fantastic. I'm always excited to hear about this program. I'm just looking at the infrastructure and how a lot of them are in progress for getting quotes, planning and design. And I'm curious how much of these projects are tied to potentially limited funding from both the provincial and thankfully now federal government kicking in. Because I just know that's a concern with like, from what I recall, some schools having like completely redesigned kitchens and now they're tied to these programs that are finite potentially. Do we see an ongoing potential for these being used fulsomely by our students and staff?
Thank you for your question, trustee Hickson. I will do my best to, to respond. In addition to the National Food Program funding this year, I believe the district applied for and received $100,000 for the food infrastructure program. And a great deal of work was done last year to address the infrastructure needs in schools. So I feel like we're in, in better shape, just in terms of the amount of work that has been completed and also being, I guess I want to, we're very fiscally conscious and working with, quite closely with Manager of Facilities Jim McFadden and Director McDonald to make sure that we are staying within budget. And if not, then, then we stop work. We can't spend money that we don't have. But I feel like we're in a good place with a lot of these, what we prioritized in terms of getting it done and, and getting schools to utilize them. There's always administration movement within our building. So sometimes administrations are moving into a building and they haven't had access to some of these facilities. So it's in their ability to work with the volunteers, the food champions, and myself to, you know, start to build their own idea and vision to how fully utilize those, the infrastructure to meet the needs of the students.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Yes, trustee Sim.
Thanks very much. Moving forward, do you see that you've got the food literacy, GUC, financial literacy and food ever being incorporated into these programs?
Thank you, trustee, for your question. Great question. My initial answer is I definitely believe it's a possibility to, to always incorporate as our programs grow, particularly in our, not just secondary, but elementary. Students who have been able to take part, I believe they had 10 schools, 10 field trips this year to the Mount Paul Community Food Center. They do a good job of introducing students to where food is grown, transportation involved, dissemination of food. So I definitely, I'm not going to say next year it's going to be fully implemented, but yeah, as schools are developing it, they're seeing opportunities to incorporate that. Some schools are looking at developing school gardens. So what are the costs involved and associated with that?
And the feeling of failure with gardens. Oh, sorry, that's just me. I do hope it's something that, that might be considered and just as our, as our students move on and progress and is understanding those costs. And I think that you have maybe told some stories of where the program has involved students going out to the grocery store and they've come back and they go, oh, that's why mom, dad doesn't buy grapes every week or something like that. So having that exposure, so although we've got the message of good, healthy food, sometimes the reality of those costs and how to mitigate and how you kind of stretch dollars for, for wise meals can also be of, of great value, not only to their home life, but also to as they progress into young adulthood.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? District Principal Carmichael, thank you so much for this agenda item. It's always so good to hear. And I, I think the Board of Education echoes your gratitude for all the staff who make projects like this possible and the amount of work that goes into these programs and food security for our students. So thank you so much. I'm moving on to the next.
Thank you, Chair Greve. Item 9.2 is an update on the facility rental rates on page 69 of the agenda package. At the April 28th Public Board Meeting, when the board approved the 2025-26 annual budget, it included a 10% increase to the community use rental rates. Attached as Appendix A on page 70 of the package are those updated rates that will then be published on the district's website. It's just an update for the board's information.
Thank you very much, trustees. This agenda item is for information purposes. Are there any questions for Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon? Yes, trustee Sim.
Thanks very much. You've got it. In, in the report, it cites the cost for the field for rental for youth out in the rural areas. Uh thanks very much. You've got it in in the report, it cites um the cost for the field for rental for youth out in the rural areas. It is that per use, per season? How does that break down?
I believe it is per use that we have those rates published.
And included in the policy, is there any room for any um exemption? So I look to probably. One of the more popular sports that would utilize the fields in smaller communities, which is the um. Uh the field of of the schools. And often they're the only schools available. And so I'm just wondering if there are exemptions for if there is no other place within a community, and I only say that because. It's a taxpayer funded asset and how do we extend it if there's no other options?
Uh thank you for that question, trustee Sim. I believe for district users, there aren't few, so we don't have that same. Policy in place that I'm aware of or.
So there's a user agreement or something for for some communities?
Hmm, but we do have that tiered rate so that nonprofits and youth groups get a preferential rate.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Alright, seeing none, uh we can move on to item next.
Thank you, Chair Grieve. Uh item nine point three is business use mileage as per administrative procedure five thirteen for travel expenses, insurance and cell phones. As well as administrative procedure five eighty for travel under district owned vehicles. Uh the district reviews its rates annually. In alignment with the CRA increase, district staff are recommending a two cent increase in the per kilometer rate. Uh to seventy-two cents a kilometer, which is two point eight six percent of an increase. Uh now which fit within the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six annual budget. Vehicle allowances uh which follow the guide to public sector compensation and expense policy, which was published by PSEC in March twenty seventeen. The vehicle allowances have remained unchanged. This was presented for recommendation.
Thank you very much, trustees. There's a recommendation attached. This one is on page seventy uh one, sorry, seventy-one of your package. Um and are there any questions or discussion uh before and looking at entertaining a motion? Um if people want to entertain a motion this evening? Alright, seeing none, uh you want to move the motion, Vice Chair Kershaw?
Yes, I'll move that the Board of Education approves the increase to per kilometer reimbursement rate of point oh two cents per, sorry, two cents per kilometer. Beginning July first, twenty twenty-five.
Uh do I have a seconder? Seconded by trustee Kang. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, seeing no discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you and opposed. Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you. Uh moving on to item next and trustees, you will find this in the green. Um package that has been circulated with your agendas as well, uh over to you.
Thank you, Chair Grieve. Under board policy two, the board shall approve the district's five-year capital plan. Director McDonald is here this evening to present the district's twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven minor capital.
Thank you, Secretary Treasurer Talon. I'll first start with the minor capital submission for the twenty-six, twenty-seven capital plan. Under the carbon neutral capital program, we've got the Arthur Hatton Elementary Boiler Upgrade, Park Crest Elementary Solar Photovoltaic Panels. Under the school enhancement program, we've got an HVAC upgrade at Seven Elementary, an HVAC upgrade at Sahale Secondary. An HVAC upgraded Aberdeen Elementary, an HVAC upgraded George Hilliard Elementary, and an HVAC upgraded Chase Secondary. And under the playground equipment program, we've got a playground for the Sun Peaks School, for Dallas Elementary and for Bert Edwards Elementary. And Director Christiansen has provided a list of sixteen buses that are due for replacement and there is a recommendation at the bottom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now Director McDonald, you're not going to read out each bus number? I'm just totally teasing you. No, we're good. Um uh so trustees, this um agenda item comes with a recommendation. Uh again, uh the recommendation in this report is. That in accordance with provisions under section one forty-two, four of the school act, that the Board of Education of School District Number Seventy-three. Council Thompson hereby approves the proposed five-year capital plan, minor capital programs from tw- for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven as provided. On the five-year capital plan summary for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven submitted to the Ministry of Education and Childcare. Moved by trustee Hickson, seconded by trustee Kang. Is there any discussion on the motion? Alright, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you and opposed. Seeing none opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item next, I believe Director McDonald, this is yours as well, but I don't want to spoil the suspense. Is this his as well? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So these are our major capital projects for the twenty-six, twenty-seven capital plan submissions. So under the school expansion program, which includes new schools, we got the new secondary school in Aberdeen. The new elementary school in Juniper West, the new K to twelve school in Sun Peaks, new elementary school in Aberdeen East. The new elementary school in Aberdeen West and under our school site acquisition program, we've got the new elementary school in Aberdeen East, new elementary school in Aberdeen West. Under the school replacement program, we've got Dallas Elementary, South County Secondary. Bert Edwards Elementary, Cavingham Elementary, Raft River Elementary, AE Perry Elementary. Marion Schilling Elementary and BD Elementary and under the Rural Districts Program, which is funding provided for demolition of vacant board owned buildings. We've got what we call the old barrier house and the Trace Creek Building. And after that list, I've just put in one footnote that in some discussions with Board Chair Grieve and Superintendent Nixon. Um we are going to start looking at the prefab addition program as an option. Um just due to the length and time for new schools to be approved and constructed. And this summer, we are going to do a bit of investigative work at Pacific Way. And the reason for Pacific Way is it's last uh that would be impacted by our school expansion program. And it also has the benefit of the double sized gym, so it can handle a higher capacity student load without seeing some of the impacts that we're seeing. Uh the other schools that have smaller gyms resulting in less uh PE time for the students. And there is a recommendation with this one as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director McDonald. Um trustee, so there's a recommendation, uh if there's any discussion. Ahead of time, yes, Vice Chair Kershaw.
I do have a question. Um the school in Bachelor has been supported now for a couple of years, so it's no longer on the list. I'm just wondering from the ministry ministry's perspective, because that's come off of our list, it doesn't really show as a as a priority anymore. How long um do they consider it to be supported? I think that probably that's a a question the public might want to know.
Um I can't give you an answer to that question because I don't work for the ministry. Um I do know. That ministry staff still are reviewing the information and I would hope for a decision in the not too distant future, but I really don't know at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, and it was somewhat of a um hypo- not hypothetical, but you know.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? On this, uh this is an item with a recommendation. Uh there's a recommendation uh for a motion that in accordance with provisions under section one forty-two, four of the school act. That the Board of Education of School District Number Seventy-three, Council Thompson hereby approves the proposed five-year capital plan. Major capital programs for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven uh as provided on the five-year capital plan summary for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven submitted to the Ministry of Education and Childcare. Moved by Vice Chair Kershaw, seconded by trustee Kang. Is there any discussion on that motion? Alright, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you and opposed. Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Director McDonald, for all of your work and for uh the memos. Uh I'll turn it back over to you. Does that conclude your agenda items for this evening?
It does, thank you.
Thank you very much, Secretary Secretary Treasurer Talon. Um moving on to item next, we have no new business. Uh we have no business arising from uh public inquiries, which brings us to the chair's report. Um so the district powwow was on June the twelfth. I want to express gratitude on behalf of the Board of Education to trustee Karpuk for sharing remarks on behalf of the board. And to Dr. Nixon for sharing remarks on behalf of the district. Special thank you to District Principal Mike Bowden for his leadership in preparing us. For the fifth annual powwow. Thank you very much. Uh the Council's Pride Parade was yesterday, June fifteenth. Thank you to everyone who joined ST seventy-three in our community in this important event. Um also gratitude to the KTTA for attaching signs to our school district sign and walking um with our group as well. Um Neurodiversity Pride Parade is June sixteenth. This is actually a global celebration of neurodivergent community. Promoting inclusion and acceptance of individuals with diverse neurological differences. Indigenous parent caregiver engagement session, there will be an open house for families on June the seventeenth. Um the KTTA Retirement Banquet is June the eighteenth, where we look forward to celebrating long service and retirements for very special teachers within our district. Uh Discovery Day, a future women in mining at New Afton Mine is June the nineteenth. This day has students learning about the mining industry and we look forward to hearing about their day. World Refugee Day is June twentieth. We look forward to honoring refugees from around the world. National Indigenous Peoples' Day is June twenty-first. Every year, our district alongside. Local, provincial and national communities come together to honor First Nations, Inuit and Métis communities through special events that celebrate their rich and diverse cultures and traditions. Uh the last day of classes is June the twenty-sixth and Canadian Multicultural Day is June the twenty-seventh, and we look forward to celebrating the rich, diverse cultures represented within our district. And within our local communities. Um that concludes uh the chair's report this evening. Um moving on to trustee reports, inquiries and good news. Uh trustee Sim, you have one under this agenda item.
Yes, thank you very much. It's just really to reiterate to, you know, staff and administration, parents, caregivers, community and family supports. Um to the grads of twenty twenty-five, uh it was really a pleasure to go through graduation season and just. As always, to know that, you know, one person is the result of so many helping hands and uh thank you. At the CSS grad on Friday night, it was said that to set that gym up for graduation takes seventy hours. Um so that's a tremendous uh amount of work that's done. Um and it's just important to acknowledge it. I also just want to uh take a moment to thank the many parents who have uh taken time to write emails and uh comment about the budget and. Uh support advocacy and I'm excited that we're going to be able to include um their hopes and dreams for budgets uh with Minister Bear, as you've as noted in the agenda there.
Thank you so much, trustee Sim. Um we have no motions this evening, which brings us over to notice uh notice of meetings. So upcoming meetings. We have a meeting with Minister Bear on June the twenty-fourth uh twenty twenty-five, so the Board of Education is really looking forward to this opportunity to meet with the minister. Talk about the needs within our district um and have discussions with her. The policy committee meeting is June the twenty-seventh and the next regular public board meeting will occur Monday, June thirtieth. At the school board office, uh thirteen eighty-three Ninth Avenue, and I will seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by trustee Hickson, seconded by trustee Kang. Uh good night, everybody. Thank you.